My people sitting here, they're the ones that's gotta pay it back and they wanna have a say in it.
Yeah.
No, you're locked up.
Oh, thank you very much. I apologize.
You know, like I say, no offense, but the people wanna have a say in this. They're the ones who are gonna be paying it back for the next thirty-eight years.
Yep.
And would this-
All the information out there.
Would you present what you presented over to the fire station? Let them make it on the best educated guess they have of what you presented over there. You took the word of a dozen people to say, oh yeah, they wanna proceed with it, but yet you don't wanna take the word of thirty people to say, give us all a seat. Come on, twenty, twenty?
You had like twenty-one, okay? And there were seventeen people there that night that were in the water district. So, again-
I was at the meeting and I certainly didn't see it.
Right. But I, I know what the count was and I'm not getting into the-
Well, if you had a sign and sheet, you would know.
Basically, there's three hundred and something users that out of both instances you're talking about, you're talking less than a third of them, not even anywhere close. You're looking at maybe about ten, twelve percent of them that have spoke. Nobody has contacted me further other than who showed up at the meeting that they're upset with going forward. Some of them may not even realize what's going on, cause a lot of people just don't take the time to understand what's going on.
Well, I'm gonna tell you something-
I can do a two-hour debate on this, but I will tell you that.
I, I live in the water district. I, you know, you know, I've had a lot of conversations on it and I don't wanna interrupt your work session either. Um, but I think, you know, it sounds like you're not, you're just looking to pass a resolution to move the process forward. But you're not gonna actually make a decision to put a shovel in the ground until you have more information on how much it's gonna cost, how many grants are gonna come in, whatever. To me, as a user in the water district, that sounds like a fair compromise that we're not moving forward, say, putting a shovel to the ground, but we're doing whatever we need to do so we don't lose funding to move the process.
But why not educate the people to what you have and let them make a decision?
Nobody showed up when we tried.
But you can't educate-
Well, this is, no, wait, now, this is what I wanna tell you.
You can't say letters and you don't know.
You're not gonna like it, but people are so disillusioned and disenfranchised with the way this is run, this town is run. I can't get people to come to this meeting. Well, what good is it? Do, you know, you, they don't listen to you anyhow and-
Exactly.
And you don't listen to anybody.
And what?
We listen. You listen, but they're speaking to the wall. I mean, he went to a lawyer that's hooked up with the same company that's representing you.
Not hooked up, they are not partners.
Look at the heading on the, uh, on the website. There says they're business partners.
Does it say that on the website?
I have no idea. That's, that's something that I would have to check out. I've never heard that. And, and this town has been using Mr. Ryan. I, I, I do, I do not like the accusation that either one of you two made for a company that has been our lawyer, that has been working for this town for multiple years.
Well, I'm a town board member. I can make an accusation if I want. It's correct. They are partners. Yes. I've seen the letterhead. They are partners. They are connected.
You don't have to yell. You're not yelling.
Where's the letterhead?
So, don't yell.
Reggie, where is the letterhead?
It's not a letterhead. It's online. You go on to the Burge. I've never seen it in writing.
Why is, why is it not a common sense compromise to move forward with the process?
Exactly.
And then just not vote on the project until you have all the information? Cause I tend to agree with you and Reg before that I, but the misinformation was is that they were voting to put a shovel in the ground. They weren't voting to put a shovel in the ground. They're voting to continue the process. And when they have all the numbers in it, that project doesn't look good, then the people can come to the town board and demand the representatives not vote for that project.
But the people have put up a petition saying they wanna vote now. What?
That petition's invalid.
No, that invalid one was the one I put out to be on the town justice one.
No, this, the water district one was invalid.
Reason to get rid of that one too then.
Well, I don't have any control over the petition. That doesn't get turned into the board watching.
So, how can you say that it was invalidated? They're all residents.
Because the petition process for that period would have been when they first passed the bond over a year ago.
You know, but the bottom line, the people wanna have a say and you don't wanna give it to them. Listen, I told you once before, I, I'm speaking to him.
You are out of line. Please be quiet.
I don't care what you say.
But this is a work session.
This is a work session.
Like I told you when I started this conversation.
It's all right for him to speak, but it's not all right for me to speak.
I didn't speak until you spoke.
You know, you can keep turning and spinning this any way you want.
Every night at a meeting, oh, it's not public time. Here, it's not, uh, it's not your turn to speak.
Lock it up in town law on a work session.
Other people get up and speak and it's all right. The brown speaks about anything he wants to and it's okay.
I allowed it to the grace of this board. I don't have to, okay?
Yeah.
That's all I'm saying is that we can keep rehashing the same viewpoints over and over. I can't answer any questions until I look up what she's talking about.
They don't show up.
Put it up for a vote. I'll guarantee you they'll show up.
We put it out in a letter for information. They did not show up. Reggie asked specifically-
And it's all it was was information, an informational thing, but at the end of the night, he said, we're gonna proceed because the bulk of the people here are all for it. But everybody, and I said them already to you, that letter was nothing more than an informational meeting. It's all it was supposed to be.
And again, we've covered all this ground. Like I said, that's exactly what the letter said. That's exactly what that meeting was, an informational meeting. Like I just said ten minutes ago, that was to explain to the public where we were at, what we had for financing, what they had to lose, okay, if we didn't go forward with the process. And to get some feedback from them on how they would like to proceed, okay? That's not you personally, Mr. Dona, being that you're especially not in the water district. I understand your daughter is.
Yeah, and she has a very, very good voice in it.
Do you have that in your ear?
Okay?
Oh, yes, Mr. Lawyer.
Procy letter.
Let me go on my quick file and see if I have that. You're being ridiculous. Do I have it, Reggie? And, and the letterhead per, do I have a copy of the letterhead? Right. No, I'm sitting here lying to you. I'm telling you that is their business partner, but they're not.
You have no proof.
Yeah, you're just full of it. You're just full of it.
Every time.
You're just defending everything he says. That's all it says. That man right there is a business partner to the Burge and that man should have never been consulted about this vote. It shouldn't went to an independent party to vote on this. His research, I'm sure, is where he found everything that would support no vote.
You, Mr. Dona, can say whatever you want and in your opinion of whatever it is that you think should or should not have happened. But it doesn't change the outcome or the circumstances that we find ourselves in right now. And this is the attorney that the town has used for multiple years for water district issues, because that's what he does, okay? There was no underhanded or backslided or any other intent to this other than for me to be able to get the information that those constituents were duly right to have after they put the petition, which I painstakingly have just spent the last month on doing, all right, among the hundred other things that I'm doing. I can't change what the lawyer said and if he had said something other than that, I'd still have to bring that back in here and say, oh yeah, we should, they have the right to do that and yes, they have the right to, to, to petition the resolution that was passed with them. But that was not the case and, and legal binding, it doesn't change the, the circumstances we find ourselves in.
Well, I just don't-
Now, if, if you don't like using Mr. Ryan's services, that's one thing. But I'm telling you now that he is the one that has did all our water districts. He's one of the most well-respected in the business for water districts, to use as an attorney. And when I went to, cause originally I went to Mr. McCormack, our town lawyer, and he said, yeah, he goes, I can do it. I can spend the next six, eight months looking up everything and you can spend all kinds of money on me. But it was his recommendation and it was our town attorney that asked for the, for us to use Bill Ryan, because that's what he did. So, the, the legal terminology would be like a doctor referring you, okay? But in this case, it was our own town attorney that referred us to Bill Ryan. So, that, that wasn't my idea to go to him. My idea was to, to have our town attorney handle it. It was our town attorney that asked, that recommended that we use somebody that specializes in to make sure that all the eyes were dotted and the t's crossed.
And he's the only one in New York State?
I'm not saying he's the only one in New York.
See, I'd like to hear that from an independent. Somebody had no skin in the game. That's all I'd like. And why you wanna shove it down the people's throat when they don't want it? That I don't understand.
I'm not gonna keep going with this conversation because it's only going in circles. And I know these people have things to do and I got things to do and I definitely just wanna make sure that the board is aware that that is what the next two steps would be. And if everybody, if most of you are on board with that, then we'll do that.
What's your next two steps?
Would be to have them move forward with archaeological study and have them, and it's way under my personal services. I'll take the hit on it.
That they're a guy.
Yep. Yeah, that's it. So, again, I feel that the, the next two steps should be done so that keeps us on board. At the end, I can't answer his question, even Dave's question, or anybody that puts any, anything to me right now on what the final cost of the project is going to be. It's a moving, fluid process. And the only thing I can tell you is what I have in knowledge, what I can base on fact and what I can tell you is still out there, okay? Or you say tonight, you're done with it all and I'll throw the folders in the filing cabinet and that'll be the end. Because I'm not gonna sit here and argue about it with one or two individuals each night. It, it's not worth it. There will come a time where that water has to be replaced, whether we like it or not. At that point in time, you won't have your financing and you won't have the engineering done. And it will be mandated by New York State, or maybe even the feds, that they deem that the water system is used, out, led to use bans. And anybody thinks that the federal government is gonna come in here and pay for a fourteen million dollar water system in two or three years or four years and you're not gonna pay anything or the county ain't gonna pay anything, there's out of the mistake. But you will end up doing whatever they want you to do. It's happened in multiple areas in the United States. Again, I don't make the determination on what the end user wants to pay. The only thing I can do is tell them, this is what I gotta do to keep moving or not. And that's where we're at.
Can I ask an unrelated question?
Sure.
Get off topic. Um, what's the deal with a stolen generator? They keep breathing about, was that secured somewhere or what happened with that?
What happened when we were, I was out with a guy, ten hours, putting all those crosswalks in. And I worked with them all day long and, um, the mats for the ADA compliant, which are the, the raised bumps for somebody that is blind. We put one on the sidewalk over there and we had to put one over here for the crosswalk on this side. And, uh, we had set, and I'll say we, cause I was with them. We set a portable generator on top of the mat on the sidewalk on the other side of this, uh, Mason Street to hold it down until the glue set. And some individual, he was on tape, um, pulled over, nicely stopped, backed up, he pulled over. He walked out, got out of his truck, looked at it, tipped it one way and they tipped it the other. And then he picked it up and then he put it in his truck. I would like to see the thing back. If this gets out, and it should get out, um, if the individual thought it was free on the side of the road, it's a four or five hundred dollar generator, Honda generator, uh, it's town property. A complaint was made to the state police who is looking into it. I burnt a copy of the videotape, cause that camera of the building, got the whole thing. I am not accusing anything of anybody or this gentleman. It could have been that simple. He thought somebody threw it out there by the road for free and that he was just picking up a free generator. Now you will know that that was not the case, that we were just holding the, the mat down until it glued, until it glued dry. So, if you could bring it back, there would be no questions. If not, the state police are doing the investigation of it right now and it'll follow to where it is.
My grandson's like that. If he sees a dirt bike or something side of the road and it's close to the road, it's free. Anything close to the road is free.
I'm sure it was inadvertent, but hopefully the word gets out.
Yeah.
And whoever it is.
Is it marked town property?
I don't really wanna get into that, but yeah.
Oh, just asking if there's markings on it.
Getting back to-
It might not be after this, but yeah.
Oh, yeah.
That's why I didn't wanna get into that.
And just to talk a little bit about town business. And we all talked about the website being in the situation it's in. And like, like today, I was notified of this meeting at around one o'clock.
Right.
Okay. Now, we need to advertise any meeting, work session, so forth, twenty-four hours ahead of time. And we also need to put an agenda up on our website.
Right.
So, for the last three, four months, we haven't had one.
No, the agenda was up for the, the meeting, the last month.
Remember at the last one, Kevin, I mentioned it to you?
Yeah, it was.
Because I couldn't get it.
I know you, you couldn't figure out how to get it, but it was-
Oh, no, I configured a computer.
Well, I'm just telling you-
It wasn't, I couldn't access it.
No, cause two people that were sitting there that night said, yeah, it was okay. But to get back to the bigger issue is, the bigger issue is that, I forgot to not mention that. I was trying to get out of here by eight o'clock, but, um, the, the security company we just talked to, tech security company we just talked to, uh, Howard was around that day, um, last Friday, day of the concert, cause he was helping to set up. Um, we spent about, got about four hours on it. Uh, most of our stuff is in pretty good shape. There's a few issues that we need to address and I'm not gonna get into them on camera. But there's a couple of things that they would suggest that we update and upgrade for our, the town's record safety. Did she say it was forty-five dollars a computer per month or? Let's not get into the dollars amounts, but roughly about a little over three hundred dollars a month to have them go up. I for one, um, it's way under the, the personal services, but I'll try to get Donna to do a resolution when she gets back that thing. So that we hired them. I asked them to give us the contract, um, and I plan on moving forward with them.
Is this the same gentleman that came to the meeting?
No, this is the same lady.
Same lady.
Last meeting.
Yeah, the last meeting. So, the gentleman that was doing it-
I work with, I know where you're confused, cause I was trying to answer his website question and I went off track a little bit. Uh, the gentleman that was doing the website is still trying to fix these issues, okay? But in the conversation with Lisa, who used to do webpages, she said we ought to, first of all, she would like to try to work with him to see if we can't figure out the issues there are. She goes, I don't do website pages anymore. I, I do one for one town that I had for twenty years and I could get rid of it, I would, but they keep hiring us back each year. Uh, she said that, uh, the website's basically a hot mess, okay, which we all know. And she has also some, that's probably gonna be a conflict of interest for you, but, uh, she also has some names of some people that are local, not right in our town, but in Clinton County or Essex County, that do websites that she would recommend that do a good job and they work for other towns. He is, Mr. Garso is willing to go to, show up and talk to the full board. I told him that we had a very lengthy, over a half hour discussion at our last meeting and that nobody is happy with what's going on because of the timeframe it's taken him to get us online.
Oh, yeah, cause he, he made us one promise and he's not even close to it.
So, I know we signed a contract with him.
Yeah, but the contract should be voided because it's his and it wasn't accomplished, not ours.
We could get into some legal litigation there if we went back on the contract. Uh, I think it was fifteen hundred dollars or somewhere around there. I, I think we're gonna pay more than water fees to get out of it.
It's a contract, so it'd be-
That's, that's another issue that, that we go into executive session.
Right.
Um, but like I said, I'm gonna talk to him, let him know that, uh, you know, not only is our board not happy, but a couple of people that are, do, do this for a living are saying that it's nowhere near where it should be and we all know that. And I can't keep banging my head against the locker, um, because he tells me X, Y, Z and then it's still gonna get done. So, that's where we're at. We may have to make a recommendation to hire somebody else. And I think if we did, it'd probably be easier. Personal bias right now looking at it, uh, without talking to our town attorney, that it'd probably be easier to say, hey, thanks a lot. We appreciate what you did so far for the fifteen dollar, fifteen hundred dollars we paid you and we're gonna get somebody else to work on it that can get it done in a quicker and more acceptable time frame. Well, I will check with, with Mr. Garso before I go on the record and start saying, well, we're gonna do what was on it. But I will talk to him about it and I, I have no, no problem, like I just did, saying that it's a mess. We, we can't have it a mess. And I've explained to him multiple times that there are, because we're a town, it's a fact that we said, we are obligated to certain things being on here at certain times. I didn't, I don't even have access to the website as an administrator to put stuff on. And that was another thing that we talked about with a couple of different individuals. Is that, uh, that access, that administrative access should be at least, I should be able to stop supervising about to get out of this, so we can pull stuff if he can't do it. If it's even up and capable enough to do it. I, I even said to him, last time I spoke to him, that I'm about ready to tell you to put the old website back up so that we can utilize that one until yours comes up online to where it's supposed to be.
Hang on a second.
Yeah.
Mike, don't get Winston. None's left.
Winston, he said he'd be willing to do that.
Yeah, thanks.
And that tells me that he has, like I said, he wouldn't, he didn't lie about that. He has the whole, the whole other website on there that was part of him archiving everything, so he wouldn't lose anything. He goes, I, I hate to put the old one back up and then have to wait another three days to take it down and then put the new one back up. But it may, it may come to that because I can't, I'm not having this stuff up. But to answer your question, I can't do a lot about it right now.
I understand. And he did actually initially put a nice, that night he came and explained, you know, what-
The picture of the website and we got the screen and-
And that's what, three, four months ago now?
Three months ago.
Three.
So, yes, we, we need help and running. He's well aware of that. He was here for about an hour and a half last week. Um, he did take in a bunch of more information as he said he needed. I even gave him the information on what roads we were paving, so he could put it on the highway page.
Yeah.
And have it out there and I still don't see it up there. And that was all we're linking up, so.
Yeah, the roads will be done before he gets it up.
Well, like I said, there's a lot of things that should be up there and there's a lot of things that we have to put up there.
I mean, all this stuff for the rec programs, all that stuff.
Yeah, by the time you got it all set up and ready to go, a lot of it was over with. I mean, the setup now for next year and there's a lot he's doing and there's a lot like when we talked to Lisa about that he's doing, like, like she, the domain needed to be bought and paid for, so it's our domain. I know he did that for us, we never had that. So, somebody could have took our domain, you know what I mean? Um, she spoke of the email addresses. Everybody down here should be using the email address under our bot paid for domain. So, I shouldn't be using Outlook and he shouldn't be using Charter or whatever he's using. Reggie shouldn't be using, uh, Gmail or whatever, you know, and I'm making these up, but I'm just saying, we all have to use the Thomas Scott Falls dot New York dot com. Whatever supervisor at, Thomas Scott Falls dot, dot, New York dot com. That way it's protected. It's, it's, it's imperative for Lisa to do her job to secure our, our files electronically and it's mandated that she have, that all of the emails that go in and out are here unless it's that computer to my computer over there. But as soon as it goes out to the internet, it needs to have, be in our, our bot paid for domain. It's part of the lock.
Is there a definite date on Pagan yet?
No, um, what happens is we do shared services, cause we bought the paper with the town and Town Plaza with us and they're using it, cause they were a little bit ahead of where Mike was for what roads we were gonna do. We're all set with them. We passed the agreement that's the New York State Highway Agreement between the, the board and the highway superintendent, that the two roads that he's gonna break. But until he can get a lockdown date of when he fits into, I'm gonna guess, I was hoping it was August, but I don't know. If it's gonna be the end of August, it'll begin September.
Usually it's before school starts, starts up on him.
Excellent. Yep. So, I'm gonna guess that the other two towns probably got most of their stuff done, but I don't know. So, it, it's gonna be up to Mike to tell me when he can get the machines and we do share services, like I said, so their guys come over and help.
Oh, sure.
And our guys go, go down with it, hey? So, that's, that's a, an exciting hookup, not mine. One thing I don't have to, you know? We'll see how that goes. Anything else from there? All right, what was the quote date? But eight-thirty's not bad. I'll take it. Um, thanks everybody for showing up. I appreciate it. Hopefully you gained some knowledge of what we're going on with and, uh, got some question to answer. There's a lot.
On that water project, Kevin, what is the deal with the Trombley road? Are we, if it goes, are we connecting it? Are we not?
All right, so the, the pit work I have, have set up right now means that those, those people, not just Trombley, but Rixon Apple.
Right, that's, yeah.
Would be, um, consolidated into the Marshall Water District, okay? Doesn't have to be. Um, what I'll do is I'll get copies of all the paperwork that's been provided by the attorneys right now and I'll show it to everybody and then the board can make up a decision on what way they wanna go with it.
But he's still all agreeable on doing everything his end of the leg work that he was talking about?
Right up until our last meeting. Yep. And, um, that project is at Ryan Davies' office right now. I just got an email late last week where he had two questions to the, the engineering. One was where the, they would, they plot out where the septic systems are now, so that we're not trying to put a water line-
Water line right through one.
Uh, the other one was like, it's escaping me right now, but there was only two minor questions. Uh, that project should be ready to move forward, I would guess, within the next three to four weeks. I hit them again on, uh, when Macy Lane is up and going. The surveyors should be there this week, cause I was told last week that the surveyors will start doing what they gotta do over at Macy Lane this week. He was waiting on the surveyor to become available.
They expect to get that going before cold weather hits us or are they gonna be a spring project?
I'll tell you what, from the Rixon side of things, um, it really, once we decided to go forward with it and move forward with it, maybe a month and a half, two months altogether to really get things. I got all the, the final engineering and might change just a hair, like, like I said, Ryan Davies from the Platte County Health Department has the right to review it and that's where it is right now. Uh, he had two questions, real simple ones, and I read the email on it. He goes, two simple questions and then it should be good to go.
No, were you talking about Rixon?
No, I was talking about Rixon. No, I was talking about-
How about Macy Lane?
Macy Lane is what I'm asking. Is that gonna go before?
I would guess that i- if we could get a contractor to say that they could do it before February, that we could probably do that this year. Because nobody's gonna wanna dig in the ground with the project. Well, the, the, can't go out the bed until we get the final engineering done and then that final engineering has to go to Ryan Davies' office and then he has to approve the, the final engineering. But you, you still got all September, October, November, the, the ground, until the end of January. So, um, it would project a big increase to the cost of the project. If we go into February, the end of January into February, you're better off to wait three months and do it in the spring.
Because they gotta start dry cambering and washing and-
I, like I, when I talked to Ron, he said this, it's gonna, it's gonna go just as fast as Rixon did at the end. He goes, we wait on you to make a good determination. He goes, most of this is waiting on the board to decide to move forward. The determination. He goes, most of this is waiting on the board to decide to move forward. Once, once you give me the go, I'm going. So, it's, it's working on it. But he won't do anything till I give him permission to do it. But, uh, so that's, like I said, four water projects I'm working on right now. It's not fun. But we're moving on all aspects of it.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thanks everybody.